Good evening, everyone. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via live stream. And there is a link embedded in our agenda, which can be found on the school's website, as well as the town's website, and as well as our Facebook page. The school committee reserves the right to implement additional remote participation procedures, and will notify the public of these procedures as soon as practical. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, August 11th, 2020. This media meeting is being video and audio recorded for future broadcasts. Please silence all cell phones for the duration of the meeting. We're going to begin this evening with our delegation, which is where we welcome public comments. Please forward all of your comments to our recording secretary, Kelly Benavides, at Since we are in a virtual meeting, and it's likely going to take a little bit of time for those comments to come in, we're going to skip down to item three on our agenda, and then circle back to delegation, again, just to allow some time for those comments to come in. So we're going to go to point three on our agenda, old business. The establishment of two new kindergarten and two new grade one classes. We're going to have a discussion and vote. Dr. Bailey?
Yes, this was actually on the agenda from last week, as you recall. And we were having a lot of technology issues with the power outages due to the hurricane. So people were just getting thrown off. So I thought it was better if everybody was in session for this. But as part of our plan, especially the hybrid plan, we want to establish two new kindergarten classrooms and two new grade one classrooms. That would not require us to hire any new people. It would just be two new positions repurposing people with a greater focus on academics because of children not being in school full-time.
May I request a motion, please, to establish two new kindergarten and two new grade one classes?
No moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay. Seeing no discussion, we are going to take a roll call vote for all of our votes this evening. Kelly?
Sure. Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner? Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tev?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the fiscal year 20 budget update with Mrs. Flynn. If you recall, we tabled this from last week. So, Mrs. Flynn?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me? Okay. I know you're having some difficulty last week, so I just want to make sure before we get too far into it. So in your packet, you have the budget update. The former members, the older members, for lack of a better word, are familiar with this. But for the benefit of the new members, we go through this usually every month, and it's the year-to-date budget update as to how we're doing. In this case, this is how we landed up as of June 30th. There are still a few adjustments that I'm waiting for the town to make. But however, this is a pretty good indication of where our budget ended for the year. Now, throughout the course of the year, I'll take different big budget line items to talk about if we have any surpluses or deficits and salaries or tuitions. So as we go forward into this fiscal year, that's what, you know, the new members can expect from this. But as you can see, the report will let you know that we spent just about all of our budget. Right now, $163 remains, but we are waiting for a final charge from the DPW for our gas usage for May and June. So once that's all said and done, I'll be able to, and we're also waiting for them to do the transfer from our budget to the Special Ed Stabilization Fund. That has not been completed on the town side yet, but the request has been sent. So I can update the committee with that at a later time. I also include, as we go through the fiscal year, the second report, that's the budget update to the school committee. It looks like this. So I'll go through our major line items and tell you where we're at with that. So at the top, you can see for fiscal year 2020, we had a salary surplus overall of $231,000, and that was net of some deficits that we had as well. So if there are any questions, I can certainly answer those as we go through. But you can see I itemized it by administration, unfilled positions, teachers, nurses, therapists, guidance, custodians, secretaries, paras. So most of this surplus comes from positions that, you know, we budget in January, but then over the course between January and the start of the fiscal year or the start of the school year, people may resign and may retire, and we fill them at different levels than the previous person was budgeted for. So in this case, we brought in people at lesser salaries overall than we did that the people that left. You can see that we used some of the, we had an unfilled position, two unfilled positions, actually. The Director of Curriculum for last year, which, as you know, we have filled. And we also had a para position that went unfilled as well. So that added to the surplus. But we used some of that curriculum money, as we talked about during the course of the year, to supplement with consultants. So rather than have a paid person on the payroll, we supplemented it with consultants through the years. So that's where you can see that line item that says superintendent's consultant. That came mostly from, obviously, from the unfilled director of curriculum. Another thing, if you see the Aesop implementation, that's our online attendance software. So we, in order to get that up and running for this school year, we had to do some training and implementation last school year. And you also see some entries needed to fund for the salaries paid from revolving funds, not from the local budget during closure. So our revolving funds that pay people are the food service budget and also the preschool revolving. So we charged that off to the local budget in, you know, we weren't getting any school lunch revenue from March on, but we still did have expenses. So you can go, you can look at the rest of it. I just wanted to give a brief explanation. You can see where we have small deficits and large deficits, some surpluses. You can see a big one is usually high school tuition, but in this case, it looks like we only had a small deficit of $13,000. So that's roughly one tuition. And then we also had a larger out-of-district tuition. Those are our students that attend placements outside of Acushion Elementary School, Ford Middle School, or our high schools. And those, you know, this year, that was mostly due to a placement change from a less costly placement to a higher cost placement. We also had three additional students that we were not aware of at budget time, but we also had two students that left during the course of the year. So there's always changes and differences between what we budget for in January to what actually happens throughout the fiscal year. So you can see the results of that. The next line down is the circuit breaker extraordinary relief. We qualified for this this year because our special ed expenses were so much more than they were in the previous year. And this is a one-time revenue that you can qualify for from the Department of Ed in recognition that you had unexpected costs, which we certainly did. And one of those, like I said, was the placement change from a lesser cost placement to a higher cost. So in May, we were notified that we were receiving $132,000. And so at that time, the decision was made through the Budget Subcommittee to take $50,000 of that and transfer into the Special Ed Stabilization Fund. So that's the entry that I'm waiting for the town to do currently, but that's why you see a difference in that. We also, of course, had surpluses in transportation because we didn't transport any students after March 13th. So you can see the surpluses that we had there. And then we had further deficits in food services, some invoices for food that was ordered, you know, and invoices came after March 13th in anticipation of serving food and being open. And then we also had our facilities deficits. So you can see there was an overall, as of the end of the year, surplus of $327,000. The next page over, so as of the end of the fiscal year, this is how that money was spent. You can see that we bought an additional 400 Chromebooks. We had purchased 200 at the beginning of June, an additional 400 in anticipation of going one-to-one initiative. We also installed outdoor Wi-Fi in case we need to have any outdoor classrooms or to help with the, and just as a public service for anyone attending the soccer fields. We also upgraded our security cameras for just under $10,000. We purchased some curriculum for just under $40,000. We prepaid special ed tuition, and that was part of our budget for FY '21. In order to come in at the number that we needed to come in, we knew we needed to take some money from the previous year and prepaid tuitions as allowed by Master and Alot to do that. So you can see that sat there. We did some additional touchless faucet retrofits. That's a small amount compared to the overall that we had previously used some facilities funds for. You can see some small items that we did to come to the ending balance of $162. That's a real brief overview of the budget. I also included a breakdown of the year-end expenditures. The Board of Selectmen has requested that we appear at their meeting on August 18th to talk about the expenditures that were made at the, at year-end. So I summarized those in a document. The one that you have is sorted by expenditures due to COVID-19 and expenditures not due to COVID-19. And you can see, you know, the vendor name, what it was for, whether it was technology, facilities, instruction, PPE, cleaning, a bigger description, and what budget it came out of. So here you can see that a fair amount of our fund, of that money, was spent on COVID-19 related expenditures from March 13th on, $273,000. And that was anywhere from the Chromebooks that I just talked about to masks, face shields, custodial supplies, hand sanitizers, soap, wipes, gowns, gloves. We did some rooftop repairs on the ventilation units at both buildings. And we also, again, mostly it's the touchless faucets and the flushometers and the paper towel dispensers. So with all of that, that, all of the touchless equipment we bought, that was about $27,000. So you can see, it adds, it adds up fast. And like I said, this is what we were requested to provide to the Board of Selectmen next week, so we'll be further discussing this with them then. And then under the non-COVID-19 expenditures, those are broken out by vendor, and you can see the curriculum at the top. That was roughly, I think about $52,000, because the overall curriculum was $52,000. Any service calls on our heating equipment throughout the course of the year? Now, keep in mind, we were without a maintenance person from approximately mid-January to the end of March. So some of these things that our in-house person would normally have done had to be outsourced, and we were in the heating season at that point, too. So we really needed to get all of this equipment up and running and fixed by an outside company. So we spent about $45,000 on HVAC repairs already. Having any plumbing done by a licensed plumber was $5,800. We had just under $5,000 in roof expenditures, roof repairs, which wasn't bad considering the age of our roof. And we also had to outsource some electrical repairs, were just under $5,500. Additionally, we replaced a few tile floors at the elementary school for $16,000. And if you recall, in the fall, we had to spend a significant amount, $7,800 spraying for triple E. So that's just kind of a breakdown. You know, I like to give some context because it is a lot of money that is being spent. So for, you know, the average homeowner, average taxpayer, it's tough to understand spending that amount of money. But when you have two big facilities that are aging, and some situations that have come up outside of your control that you wouldn't have budgeted for, I wanted to give some explanation to where we've spent that money. So that is what I have for the budget update. I don't know if anybody has any questions at this point that I can try to address?
Hey, maybe you hit on this a little bit. I just want to make sure I'm clear. On the technology deficit, 52705, and that, what is making that up? What's driving that?
Okay, so that technology deficit that you see on the front page of the 52705, that was right at the end of June, and what made that up was the purchase of the first 200 Chromebooks. So we were pretty much breaking even with our technology budget until we made the decision to purchase 200 Chromebooks. And then we also knew we wanted to purchase more, but at that point in time, we hadn't settled yet with our bus company providers. So we didn't want to spend money that we didn't know that we had. So we wanted to make sure that we had that amount of money left over from unspent funds for transportation due to COVID-19. So we bought the original 200, and then in early June, and that's, it was roughly $50,000. And then after that, that's when we made the decision to go ahead and expend the rest of the transportation, unspent transportation funds on the additional Chromebooks. That $52,000 you see there was just with the first purchase of the Chromebook. The total technology that we spent in between March 13th and the end of the year was about $190,000. So that included the new Chromebooks and then some other items that we also needed to purchase. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristin, what was the total amount we settled on for the bus contract?
So we, we haven't settled yet. The, we have a memorandum of agreement out to the bus company. It has not been finalized, but that it represents 30% of what the cost price per bus per day for the number of days that we were closed from March 13th to June 15th. So, so that, the amount that was due, that was surplus from that contract was $139,408 for the home-to-school transportation. So we still have the amount that we owe Emerald per our agreement that we're waiting for them to sign. We have that encumbered. So when you look at this report here, when you see the encumbrances column, you'll see some funds encumbered there that tells you what we owe to vendors that either we didn't receive the bill in time to pay it for June 30th, or we're waiting for the goods, or in this case, we're waiting for the legal settlement to go through.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Kristin, I had a question.
Yes.
Regarding the, the gas bill that we're waiting on, are we going to transfer from the building rental, or where is that going to be?
Well, I figured that it's roughly $100 based on, they had charged us from July to April.
Yeah.
So I just took a, I did a quick, you know, proration, and that's why I left that amount of money there.
Okay.
And so if it goes over and above, then yes, we will have to charge off some expenditures to the school building rental budget or to one of our other revolving funds, which would be the preschool revolving. So to balance, can't end in a deficit, in other words.
And then my other question regarding the bus company, when is that getting finalized? I thought that was all said and done.
Well, we have sent the agreement, the proposed agreement, through our attorney, to, to the bus company's attorney, and that was back on July 2nd, I believe, and we have not received anything back. And as of the last time I followed up with our attorney, he had not heard anything, and that was probably about two weeks ago.
So, I'm just confused. So we sent them the check to pay for the 30?
No, no. No, we haven't sent them any money note. That's what we see, you see encumbered. So I said, I know we're going to owe them. If you look on the second page, line 29, roughly 44810, and that's for the high school, middle, elementary transportation. And then, that, that's right, that's all of our transportation. So that's being held, you know, in our budget, so to speak.
Okay.
By the time comes to make the payment. And from what I understand, won't make the payment until an agreement is reached. But keep in mind, however, that this now may be impacting what we, what we are going to be asking the bus company to do come fall. So stay tuned for that.
Okay.
How long, Kristin, I'm just, how long do we wait for them to sign this agreement?
Right.
And if you continue to see no news coming back?
Right.
What next?
Well, the encumbrance, from what I understand, can stay out there, the funds can stay out there for one year. So when we come to the end of this fiscal year, June 30th, 2021, I believe that money goes away. So that's one answer. The other answer is, you know, we have to reach an agreement somehow, right? Because we, we have one more year left on our contract, and presumably, the bus company would like to have this money. So at this point, you know, we are waiting for them to agree or to make a move, whether that be, you know, a counter-agreement or some other form of legal action. I don't, I don't know at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you know how many other districts they settled with, with amounts?
I believe.
I'm just looking at if we're going to have issues with them.
Right.
Going forward.
Last I knew, I believe it was only one of the five districts, I believe it was, that I think they've made a settlement. I don't think the other, I think the other districts are in the same situation we are.
Any other questions about the budget update?
One last thing, it's probably a little off, but the roof project?
Yes.
With that?
So the update for the roof project is the MSBA will be voting on our schematic design. We, the selectman approved the schematic design earlier this summer, and the proposed budget from the architects and the designers and the OPM. So at some time this month, it's not an in-person meeting, it's a virtual meeting, it's a formality. The MSBA will vote on our project, and then at that point, we will know for certain, you know, whether on their end, the project has been accepted. And then it will be up to us to now get the funding in order for it. But they, if they vote to accept it, that's for, that they're agreeing to pay 57.4% of the cost of the project.
Has that amount changed at all from the original?
The reimbursement has not. The reimbursement rate has not, no.
No, no, I'm saying the cost of the project.
The project cost, yes. And I can get that to you at the next meeting. I don't have it right with me right now, but I do have that, you know, handy, but not right, right now. So I believe, because the original estimate was based on, you know, just a rough, a rough estimate of what is the price per square foot for a roof. But now this cost estimate is based on the designers coming out, the architects, and doing whatever they need to do to really look and see what our project needs, not just like a materials and labor cost.
Gotcha. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So if no one else has questions on the budget, I do have budget, a budget transfer that requires a vote of the school committee. You have a few in your packet, but just to explain the process for the new members and also for anyone out there watching in the public, during the course of the year, school committee policy allows budget transfers to take place as approved by the business manager, myself, after they've been submitted, say, by the principals or any other department head who has a budget. If they are within the same, what we call Department of Ed function code, this business manager has the authority to do those transfers. When they are outside the Department of Ed function code, that's when a vote of the school committee is required. So the Department of Ed function code would be, for example, anything in the 2000s would be instruction. So if you look at the budget transfer request form in your packet, it looks like this. And I'm going to be asking for a vote on the one that has checkmarks in the far-right column. That means school committee approval is required. So you'll see up at the top, a number that says 02111210. So that tells us, for Department of Ed reporting, that that's a school department expense, it's an administrative expense, it's for the central office, and it's a salary, it's a supply, it's a service. So in this case, what you want to focus on is the first set of numbers, the last four. So if we take the top one, it's 02111210. So the last set of numbers, 1210, that's the function codes, that's the 1,000 function code, which is administrative expenses. If you look at the next grouping down, the last four numbers are 4130. That's a 4,000 account, which is maintenance and facilities. So in these cases here, there wasn't enough funds in, say, the administration code to transfer into, to balance the surpluses and deficits, nor was there enough funds in the 4,000 code, the maintenance code, to transfer into to balance surplus and deficits. So we had to look to another object code, another set of funds to transfer in, and that's when school committee approval is required per the policy. So you'll see copies of all the transfers that we do throughout the year. The ones that, a lot of them were just done as a matter of course because it's within, so we might request transferring from general supplies to math books or something like that. That's just done to be expeditious, but you also do get a copy of those transfers in your packet for reference only. The ones that I'm going to ask for a vote tonight are the ones that you can see transferring in from adminis, to administration, all those 1,000 accounts, the top three. And I'm using special ed transportation funds that were surplus because we only paid 30% to balance those deficits. And then the next grouping down, you'll see all those 4,000 accounts, electricity, telephone, service contracts, equipment purchase, equipment repair parts, custodial supplies, more electricity in Ford, telephone, district maintenance of equipment. So those all finished with deficits because of the purchases that I talked about earlier tonight. And they're going to be balanced off by funds that we had in transportation. So you see I'm requesting to transfer into a 4,000 account from a 3,000 account. 3,000 is transportation. So I hope that that makes sense, but that's, that's what school committee policy dictates. But again, for all of the transfers that I do do, you will get a copy in your agenda. The only ones that require a vote are the ones outside of their own function code. Does anyone have any questions on, on that explanation? Nope? Okay. So I guess I would like to have a vote to approve these transfers.
Can we request a motion to approve the budget transfer, transfers presented? You're on mute, Jonathan.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll take a roll call, roll call vote. Kelly?
Sure. Mrs. Gomes?
Hi.
Mr. Sumner?
Hi.
Mr. Hood?
Hi.
Mr. Tev? I'm sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. And Mrs. Downing?
Hi. Okay, thank you. All right. Fiscal year 20 pre-K tuition refund.
Okay. Thank you. My final item for tonight is, in recognition of the fact that school was closed for a period of time, the Director of Student Services, Dr. Bailey, and I had talked about refunding a small portion of the tuition that was paid during last school year. Students did receive remote instruction during this time, so they did receive instruction while we were closed, but we felt that it would be a decent thing to do to refund a very small portion. Now, keep in mind, the preschool revol, the preschool program, we pay a teacher's salary, a portion of a teacher's salary, and a para salary out of it. So we rely on those revenues into the program to sustain those positions. But we thought, like I said, in recognition of the fact that we were closed and students weren't coming into our buildings every day, that we would propose a small refund of $100 to each full-paying student. There are students who have received tuition assistance. There are students who have received tuition assistance. So that $100 will be prorated based on their level of assistance. And then just for, you know, for clerical sake, if some of those students were three-year-olds and they're returning as four-year-olds, we will credit it to their tuition this year. If they are not coming back this year, we will issue a check to them. So as I said, preschool tuition pays for about 38% of a teacher's salary and 100% of one parent's salary. So what we're looking for is just approval from the school committee to go ahead and issue that small refund.
All right, great. Thank you, Mrs. Flynn. So may I please request a motion to approve the pre-K tuition refund as presented?
No move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll move into that roll call vote. Mrs. Benavides?
Mrs. Gomes?
Hi.
Mr. Sumner?
Hi.
Mr. Hood?
Hi.
Mr. Tev?
Hi.
And Mrs. Downing?
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're gonna circle back on our agenda, back to delegation. Mrs. Benavides, do you have some comments you'd like to read?
I do have one.
Great, thank you.
Excuse me. So I received a comment from Lisa Cavallo, the ATA Union President. Good evening, Madam Chair, excuse me, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Bailey, and School Committee members. My name is Lisa Cavallo, and I am the ATA President. On behalf of the Acushnet Teachers Association, I would like to enter a statement in regards to opening of schools. Educators across the country continue to grapple with weighing the benefits in-person instruction versus health and safety standards needed to return to classrooms and campuses. Based with the pandemic that is actively spreading to children, teens and adults, we know that it is not, not safe to return to in-person learning at this time. We, as the Acushnet Teachers Association, are recommending a return to learning in August with a gradual phased-in approach that is tied to public health and safety benchmarks. The safe return to learning in August must be guided by science, not by a school calendar or politics. We are calling upon Acushnet public schools to begin the school year with a comprehensive distance learning plan that has the potential to graduate to a hybrid learning model. The graduation from the distance learning phase to a hybrid phase must be defined using public health benchmarks, a thorough evaluation of the building to ensure they are safe places for learning and investment to make necessary improvement. As educators, we cannot risk a premature return to in-person learning that will result in educators, students, or their families getting sick and dying. In order to protect the health and safety of our communities, we must direct our energy to the development of high-quality distance learning. Much is uncertain right now, but this is crystal clear. The stakes have never been higher. Not one single person should get sick or die because we opened our doors prematurely. The only acceptable death count is zero. The members of the Acushnet Teachers Association care deeply about the safety and well-being of our students, as well as the quality of the education we provide. The best interest of our students overall and overall success of our school system are our top priorities. We have demonstrating, demonstrated our willingness to go above and beyond to ensure that our students have every opportunity to be successful. We want nothing more than to be back in the classrooms with our students. However, it is simply not yet safe for a full physical return to our school. And that will place students, educators, staff, and families at risk. Health officials have not fully reassured the public of the utmost safety to return to school buildings of COVID-19 persist. In all teaching and learning environments, six feet of social distancing must be the minimum standard. Face coverings must be worn by all students, staff, and visitors, with the exception of documented medical condition. The ATA embraces a plan by the Massachusetts Teachers Association, American Federation of Teachers Massachusetts, and the Boston Teachers Union to have a phased-in return to school, which begins with remote learning and allows proper health and safety measures to, to be brought into place and properly monitored. To that end, the ATA supports a remote module moving towards a hybrid model to start the 2020-21 school year. A remote start, which includes a later start date for students, will allow time for educators and staff to participate in necessary professional development, collaborate with peers, and prepare for an improved distance learning environment to connect with families either virtually or safely in person to make sure that they have the tools they need and are prepared for distance learning. It also provides time to build initial relationships with students through virtual platforms without wearing a mask. To reopen buildings too soon with a likelihood of closing again due to a potential surge in infection rates ignores the reality that, without testing, contact tracing, and proven antibody therapy, risk levels for the entire community is too large. We support this plan due to the thoughtfulness and hard work that has been going on this summer. Communities were formed with 33 voluntary staff members and eight parents working over 32 hours and continuing because the work is not done. Lot classrooms have been created to see what is safest. HVAC systems have been cleaned and are in good working condition. Touchless sink, touchless toilet flushes, and touchless soap dispensers have been put in. Classrooms have been cleaned out and are sterile environments. EPE has been purchased, and our nursing stations have been moved and set up according to regulations. We are lucky to have buildings that have been well-maintained and are fairly new. The ATA feels that any focus on getting our students into school buildings before conditions are safe, distracting from the most important conversations, ensuring that our instructional strategies meet the needs of all students, especially in the light of academic loss last spring. Our hope is that by focusing on remote learning that moves toward a hybrid model, we can put all of our energies towards meeting the academic and social-emotional needs of our students while the remain at-home learner. Thank you for your consideration as you take a vote this evening. We understand how difficult the process, and this decision has, has been and continues to be. We applaud the efforts of all the stakeholders who have worked so diligently and thoughtful in creating a plan that keeps everyone safe and healthy.
Thank you for that. Okay. Moving on to Dr. Bailey, you have an update on personnel matters.
Yes. So in your package, you have a personnel report. And you can see we had one resignation. The plan as of today is not to fill that position, because we only have one EL student. Last year, we had seven. We have some, a couple of students that we're monitoring, but we feel that we can work with another school system to make sure that the one student we do have gets the services that they need. And then you can see at the bottom of the report, there's one, two, three, four, five, six teachers who we're basically repurposing. These are teachers who have another position. And you can see the first says what they currently are and what they're getting moved to. So they're transfers. And it's due to the situation with a hybrid plan and, and remote. We are prioritizing, obviously, getting kids in front of us as much as we can. And we prioritize younger students, because we know they don't do well with remote learning for, for one reason. But I would like to say that every person on that list, I called them into my office, had a socially-distanced meeting. The professionalism and the willingness was beyond measure, unbelievable. I will say that the teachers, such as these ladies on this list and people who I've been working with over the summer really and truly want to do what's in the best interest of children. And I know that change is hard sometimes, but we want to put a high-quality teacher in front of our students. And I have no doubt that these teachers listed on the report are going to do a phenomenal job so that we can have lower class sizes in our kindergarten and grade one. Obviously, if we could have enough teachers to move up to grade two and grade three, et cetera, we would do that at this point. But I just have to put a shout-out to these teachers who are transferring, because they truly were remarkable in the meeting that I had with them. This is not easy, but they're taking it on. They're preparing a new grade level, perhaps. And they're willing to do whatever is necessary for the children. So I can't say enough about the teachers that I've been working with over the summer. And there probably will be some more teachers that we will have to repurpose based on our plan moving forward. We just really need to get a plan so that we can stop putting some details in. But we knew for a fact, we knew that these six teachers definitely needed to be repurposed. So we did, I think we started to talk about this last week. And basically, they're part of the personnel report. We did transfer them. We did vote tonight on the establishment of the two new kindergartens and the two new grade ones. And that is a direct result of these teachers transferring into those new slots. Does anybody have any questions about the personnel report?
Oh, a quick question for you. So how many kindergartens do we have now? And how many first grades do we have total?
Currently, we have five in each, and we're moving up to seven.
In each?
In each. Mm-hmm. For this year. So the vote was only for this school year.
And how many children, on average, are in each of those grades? Or will it be in each classroom?
Yep. So if we go with the hybrid model, we'd be looking between 10 and 12 if all of the children choose to come back. And if not, we'll do some adjusting. But we're thinking between 10 and 12. Our classrooms can hold 12 children with the six-foot distancing requirements.
Understood. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for that update, Dr. Bailey. Any other questions about the personnel matters? Okay. Reopening plans.
Okay. Well, I just want to say that personally and professionally, this is not an easy situation that we find ourselves in. Unfortunately, even with the directives that the state has given us, they've been conditional at best. So we find ourselves, unfortunately, every local district in the state has to make these decisions together with their school committee. And this is not easy, because I'm an educator. I went to school to educate children, and that's where my area is. And I think that we all have to acknowledge our vulnerabilities about making these decisions. So these decisions tonight, well, I should say, the recommendation tonight is based on science. And I was pleased to see that Mr. Oliver has a bobblehead of Dr. Fauci, because, you know, we're not doctors. We're not medical doctors. We need the medical doctors. We need data, survey information. I've talked to a lot of parents, a lot of teachers. I know that staff, family members have succumbed to this virus. So I understand the way that staff feel. I also understand the way families feel, because whether you're on one side or another, there's no right option here, okay? I can tell you that as a parent, I have a rising senior and a rising sophomore. I can tell you that my rising senior last night was in tears, heartbroken, because her district is going remote. She wants to go back to school. It's heartbreaking, but I also understand, sitting in the chair that I sit in, there are logistics that also people don't understand when it comes to making these decisions. And I will say that the data that's coming out, it's been coming out constantly at us all summer long, okay? As a matter of fact, up until today, we received new information. And this is just constant. You'll see a couple of slides on the presentation tonight. And Carrie, you can feel free to put up the cover if you'd like. You'll see in the presentation tonight that some of the slides we've actually updated based on the data coming out. But you'll see across the state, there's trends in ways that don't necessarily look good for reopening schools. And one of those things is the governor, Governor Baker spoke on Friday, and he really pulled back on his plan to allow large gatherings. And I know there's a lot of confusion with that, because you, one might think large gatherings, well, we have more than 50 children in a school. If you read the guidance, it does not include schools. The reason why the governor did that is because it was not a second surge. It was actually an uptick in, in the virus numbers across the state. So he wants our kids to go back to school, okay? So I understand that there are many, many different points of view. As a parent, I'm very sensitive to how our families feel. I want to thank people for all the positive emails after last week's meeting. It's very much appreciated. But just to go back a little bit, on July 31st, our district had to submit summaries on three different plans to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that plan, those plans included a full in-person, a hybrid, which is a combination of partial in-person and partial remote or distance learning, and then fully remote. And what we talked about last week is that the full, fully in-person is not feasible. We do not have the space to meet the guidelines that DPH and DESI and the CDC has all outlined for us. We do not have the staff to do that. So it just was not feasible. We're all in agreement that we want our children to achieve. It's just, how do we do it? This plan that you're going to see tonight is based on science, data, surveys, and most of all, most importantly, is the safety of our students and our staff. Without our staff, we cannot teach our students. And we all know that the best education that we can give our children is in-person education. And our teachers know that as well. There are two options tonight for the school committee. One is to vote for a hybrid plan, which is what I'm recommending. And the other option is fully remote. I do want to just say that I have seen communities being torn apart over this situation. And I want you to know how seriously myself and my entire team takes this. And I know how much people in this community rely on us to make the best decision. So we don't need fights. We need to look at it as a problem to be solved, where we all come together. Because now, more than ever, it takes a village, and I really mean that. There's no winners here, and there's no losers. It's all about what's doing what's best for our children. So again, we have two options tonight. We're gonna present our recommendation, which is a hybrid model with a phased-in approach. And I just want to say, in the end, it will be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be quite apparent if we underreacted or did too little. So just think about those words as we move on with tonight's presentation. Thank you for listening to that. I know that was a very long, but I just, I know this is very emotional for many people. But hopefully, after you see this presentation, you'll understand the reasoning of why we're recommending what we're recommending. So I want to thank everyone who's actually watching the school committee meeting tonight. And why don't we go on to the next one? Oops. There you go. All right, let me just fix my screen here so I can see. Okay. So this, this just basically says that none of these decisions that we're going to talk about tonight have been done in isolation. I believe that the ATA President mentioned in her letter tonight during delegation, and she's correct, that many people were involved in the working groups, whether it be teachers, parents, administrators, people in our community. We've worked with the fire chief, the local board of health. We've worked with doctors at the state level, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DPH. The list goes on. Because, again, we're educators. We're trying to get, sit on the balcony and listen to everybody else's lens. Everybody has their opinion, but, again, it's got to be based in science and data for safety. We also took surveys of our families, which we appreciate. And I just want to point out that those surveys are very helpful for us to know how people think and where they're at. And I'm sure- how people think and where they're at. And I'm sure if we did a survey tomorrow, it might be a little bit different based on some of the data today. And it might be different next week. So it constantly fluctuates. The survey was not a vote. It was one piece of very important information for us. We also took a survey of staff. Very important for us to know how our staff feel. You know, I said this last week, and I'll say it again. We have to have the adults comfortable and in, all in with this for this to work. So I just want to publicly thank people. We've had an awful lot of volunteer hours and work. And I just want to say, people have been extremely thoughtful and considerate in their work this summer. Go to the next slide. There you go. So this shows, you know, why are we trying to open schools in Massachusetts? You can see the states on the left in the green, and there's a red arrow that shows where Massachusetts is. Those are all states with, that have a 5% positivity rate or below. So though, all those green states are 5% and below. And that data is a strong recommendation that those states in green should be trying to get students back in school. We also received some other metrics today, and again, I apologize that we just got this this afternoon on one of my calls, showed another metric that the state put out, and a cushionet isn't a good place to try to bring children back to school. Now remember, we already talked about the fact that we cannot bring everyone back based on the guidelines, the physical distancing, et cetera. We don't have the space or the number of teachers needed. But according to the data that we're looking at, we should certainly be trying to get students back in front of us because we know that's the best way they learn. And if I was a superintendent in one of those orange states, I think we would be having a very different conversation right now. Okay, the American Academy of Pediatrics, they clarified their stance. They had put out a statement on July 10th. And they received tremendous backlash because basically what we heard from the American Academy of Pediatrics is we need to get kids back to school. It's good for them, their social, emotional learning. And the scientists and all the stakeholders said, wait a minute. We all agree that it's school, in-school learning is the best place for children to learn. However, we are in a pandemic. We must rely on the scientists to tell us when to open. The educators, and that would be not just me, but the people I work with, my team, very qualified. We have to figure out how to do that based on the data. So this next slide, this is one of the ones that I actually updated today because this data is changing fast and furious. So if you look at the blocks, what this is meant to do is trying to show us a map of the United States. So, you know, it's not like a perfect map, but it just kind of puts the states where they're at and what color they are. So of significance, this shows the month of July in Massachusetts as a darker shade of blue, which means there's already increase of child cases over the last month. And if you look at your packet, the original packet that I sent you, I believe it said 40% increase in child cases over a two-week period. And now it's because states are starting to open up schools, right? So all this time, they closed down schools in March. They did not have a lot of data on children with COVID because by and large, we were keeping our children safe by quarantining them at home and not sending them to school. But now states are reopening, sending their kids back to school, and we're seeing a 90% increase overall in child cases. So that's a 65% increase over the course of two weeks.
So I'm going to take this slide. This one is rather sobering, and it gives us a deeper glimpse into the science behind the disease. And this information does have implications for teachers and our adult community as well as our students. But what it's really telling us is that COVID-19 is a cardiovascular disease. And what that means is it's a virus that's infecting the blood vessels. So unlike the flu, where the primary infection area is the respiratory system, this disease has the potential to attack any vulnerable tissue that is supplied by our blood vessels. And then this peer-reviewed article in Science Daily. It clarifies the myths, mistruths that are out there, that children are almost immune. What this article is telling us, and again, these are both peer-reviewed science from science journals, that the viral load found in children's noses is higher than older children and adults. So we can make the statement that children are impacted by this disease, and by no means are they immune. So these three news articles, I like to call them Objective, New York Times, The Washington Post, and The New Yorker. What these articles are telling us is that as districts are opening in our state, they are being forced to immediately close. And in our planning process and with our team, we must make a plan knowing that COVID is in our state, and it is in our community. So statistically, it will be in our schools, and we must plan for it.
So as you know, at the beginning of the summer, DESI and some doctors were saying, we've got to get kids back, get kids back. This is the most recent map of school districts as of August 7th. And there's currently no school district planning a fullback in-person. When we had to submit our plans as districts on July 31st, I can tell you that the vast majority of districts were recommending a hybrid model. And obviously, that's what we're going to be recommending. But I will say that many districts who originally said they were going to recommend a hybrid model are pivoting, and they're pivoting to remote right now. And again, unfortunately for some districts, when they made these decisions, they didn't have all the metrics that are coming out. So I was happy to get the metrics that we got today. So anyway, at this time, you can see that a good majority of districts are recommending hybrid or remote.
So this slide helps us understand why most Massachusetts schools are opting for this hybrid model. It does offer us some huge logistical challenges, as Paula mentioned before, but it is advantageous because it allows us to focus on core subjects. It allows us to focus our attention on our special ed population and our EL students. But it also helps us combine the very best practices of remote learning and in-person.
So it's sort of like the best of both worlds. So as you can see, this is where we're getting into the fact that our district made an adjustment. We adjusted our phases based on feedback we received after last week. We adjusted this based on data and keeping people safe. That was the bottom line. And I didn't feel comfortable with some of it after reviewing it. Logistically, it was not going to work, and I'll explain as I get into it. But phase one is basically the same dates. That primarily is a phase of teacher training. And one thing I say as educators, it's almost like we are all first-year teachers all over again. And I put myself in that role because no one has ever done this during a pandemic, right? I mean, this is so new. It's such a new way of teaching that we have to be open-minded and have to make adjustments and adapt our teaching styles, our leadership styles, to working through a pandemic. So we need the time. The ATA president in her letter was absolutely correct. We need training. Our district right now currently has quite a bit of new curriculum, which has been needed for years. We're not wasting time. We're not using excuses that we're in a pandemic, that we're going to hold off on the curriculum. We know that our children don't have a second chance at second grade or fifth grade, and you know what I mean. So we have to live in the moment. And right now, what we're being handed is a pandemic. As long as we can feel safe while we do it, that's what we're recommending. Phase two is September 18th through October 2nd. And this is, this was the big adjustment. Last week, we talked about a three-day orientation for getting all of our kids in. And the more, I know the more I kept thinking about it, getting all of the kids in in three days, especially when we were planning a cohort model, a small cohort, and now we're talking about doing some quick orientation in three days, it's really rushed, and it's not safe. So we readjusted. I'm going to go over that with you tonight. Because when we open, the goal is to stay open. We don't want to start, stop, start, stop. Of course, we pivot, we adjust, if that's what the data tells us to do. But the goal is for us to at least stay in a hybrid model and at least have a lot of our kids in front of us. Another thing that's different is, I don't think we touched upon this too much last week, but in phase two, starting September 17th, we'd be getting our high-needs population in. It's a small group of children, some children who may have special needs, homelessness, EL, English learners, any child who has high, is who's identified as a high-needs student. Our recommendation is that they start school on September 17th, and they go to school four days a week, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday. And then phase three is October 5th and beyond. That's the actual hybrid schedule. So as you can see, we have this outlined in a calendar format. Teachers report back to work August 31st for professional development. Teachers are back at work now, starting August 31st. We go all the way with our PD and planning with our teachers through September 15th. We kept it easy on the 16th, knowing that Wednesdays was our remote day for our complete hybrid schedule. So not to confuse anyone, we just decided it would be our first day of remote. And teachers, again, would have time to plan for this remote learning. And I do want to stress that remote learning has to look different than it did in the spring. As you recall, March 13th, when we were all told, you know, we're going home, nobody ever expected what happened. And I commend our teachers. They did the best they could. And again, nobody has ever done this. So now we know, and we are going to provide our teachers with the training. But our students deserve to have uninterrupted, high-quality learning, whether they're at home or in school, and it's, we have an obligation to do that. And I know I have the teachers behind me in doing what's best for our kids with that. So that first day, everyone is remote. As I stated on the 17th and 18th, that's going to be our first day of actually having children back. A small group of children, students. Preschool is going to start, so that Cohort B will be on Thursday and Friday. And EL, so our high-needs population. And again, preschool children, we have some peer models, but a lot of those children have special needs. So they have to be prioritized. They'll be coming in two days a week in cohorts. So let's go to the next slide, please. And September 21st through the 25th, again, we have all of our faculty on site. And if we look, just to review this again, our high-needs population is back on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. These are the children in our collaborative, our special education students who are identified as high-needs. Any McKinney-Ventle students, the homelessness, preschool students in their cohorts start back, as well as EL. This is where we're starting our orientation. And like I said earlier, I was not comfortable doing this in three days, unfortunately. And I know this probably puts, this is probably problematic for daycare issues at home, and I understand that. But if we want to do this right and well, we've got to do this, we've got to go slow to go fast. So if you look, students in Cohort A in kindergarten and fifth grade, that's their first day of orientation. I, you know, I think about these kids. They've been without their friends for months. They're not used to coming to school wearing a mask. We were going to rush something for two hours. We're going to have them for a whole half-day. We are going to send them home with a lunch after we do the training. And the idea is, we want our kids leaving us with lots of joy and happiness and excitement to get back to us when we start our hybrid schedule on October 5th. But again, this is a lot of logistical organization to make this work, including transportation. On Tuesday, we will have grades one, four, and six come to school. Just Cohort A, if you're identified as Cohort A, in the morning, and then you'll be remote after, at home. Meanwhile, all of Cohort B is at-home remote learning for the week. They're going to have a full week of remote. Thursday, Cohort A, grade two and seven. And Friday, grade three and eight will have their orientation for half a day. What this does, it allows our teachers to get comfortable again with the process, and it allows our students to get comfortable. I mean, think about it. Our kids are in a culture where they're used to going up to their friends and hugging them, for instance, right? There's a lot of rules now that we're going to be talking about. I know that's later in the agenda with our handbooks, but it is different. School is going to be different for our students, and school is going to look different for our staff. This takes time. Next slide. This is the same thing, except now it focuses on Cohort B. This is their days that they would come in. And nobody really knows who Cohort A and B is yet because the administrators are working on those lists. But again, kindergarten and grade five and Cohort B would come in for their half-day training. They would leave school with lunch. And that training includes COVID training, social, emotional training, training on the curriculum. The teachers are going to be fabulous at this. They know. They're amazing with the kids. I've been following, just as a little aside, I've been following a camp, an overnight camp in Maine. And the children, they have not had a lot of problems. Yes, they lowered the number of kids who are allowed to attend the camp this summer. But because they had a culture of mask-wearing and following the protocols, they have not had a lot of problems. And I really believe in a cushionet, we can follow suit. So again, the Cohort A who had their orientation last week, the week before, they're now remote for the week. Next slide. So this is where it starts our hybrid and beyond. Again, I said it a few minutes ago, our high-needs students have already started. They are continuing on their four days a week. They only have one day remote. Because we were able to repurpose our teachers, we have added two-grade kindergartens and two-grade ones. So kindergarten and grade one will be on-site four days a week. So this is, this is sort of a gift. We really don't like to prioritize any grade, right? Because we know all grades are developmentally important wherever they are. But we really believe that, you know, the preschool with their special needs, the kindergarten and grade one are foundational years. And we know over the years that students who don't attend preschool, who don't attend kindergarten, come in with significant deficits. We also know from our experience in the spring that those students did not do well with remote learning. It was really hard, let's face it. A five-year-old, a six-year-old trying to be on the computer on a Zoom, it's just, you know, I can say I have trouble focusing on that when there's 20 people on. So it's really important that we get them in four days a week. Something that we are building into their schedule, this is again, K and one, is a technology block, a technology lesson every day that they are in school. Because they're going to have one remote day a week. But should we have to go remote because the science and the data tells us that we go remote? We want our kindergarten and grade one students to know how to sign on, how to be independent. We know that it's really hard for some families to help out in these types of situations. We're making arrangements right now for our entire district to go one-to-one with computers. So hopefully, I mean, if we do go remote, everyone's going to have a computer who needs one, and it'll be issue. So, hopefully, I mean, if we do go remote, everyone's going to have a computer who needs one, and it'll be issued by the school. So, then, we look at grades two through grade eight. On a Monday, you see that students in Cohort A are onsite for the day on Monday and Tuesday, and those students in Cohort B are remote learning or distance learning. Wednesday is the remote learning for all students, and then it's flip-flopped. On Thursday and Friday, we have our students from Cohort B onsite, and our Cohort A students are continuing with their remote learning. Now, the reason why, just to give you a little background on why, you know, it was decided to recommend a two-day, one-day, two-day split, a lot of our families and teachers actually preferred this model. And also, I have Mr. Willett here today, and I'll get to him in a few minutes, but the idea is, we have one cohort with us, small cohorts in a classroom for two days, Monday and Tuesday. And in addition to the daily cleaning that's going to get done, on Wednesday, we have a very deep cleaning, disinfecting going on. And the same thing after the Cohort B cohort leaves us on Friday evening, whether it's Friday evening or Saturday, we have another deep disinfecting cleaning. And again, Mr. Willett is on the line today to answer questions, so I'll just give you a quick overview of what's happening with that. But we'll get to that in a few minutes. Next slide. So, again, the idea of this is to bring kids back in person as much as possible. And we know that our metrics, and we've got Dr. Fauci with us tonight on the bobblehead over there, we know that a cushionet is considered moderate infection rates. So, Dr. Fauci says, "In places with moderate infection rates, however, a modified approach, like bringing kids in only some days or parts of the day, and implementing mask-wearing and physical distancing may be safest." And again, I just have to reiterate, we are following scientific guidelines. It's always going to be impossible to know if we overreacted or did too much, but it will be quite apparent if we underreacted or did too little. So, my recommendation to the committee tonight is a hybrid phased-in model, where we can get our children back for a more in-depth orientation, which would help our staff and our students, take it slow to go fast, and then, starting October 5th, we're on the hybrid schedule. Before I go to Mr. Willett, does anybody have any questions on what was presented with this presentation tonight?
No.
I have a question.
Sure.
Am I up? I'm sorry, okay. So, with the remote learning, with Cohort A, for example, going in and being in-person, what would Cohort B look like? Would they be remote with a teacher for the whole day or half a day? Can you just explain to myself and the public what that would look like? And we know what it'll change.
Mrs. Stofel, can you share your screen on that, and then I can add to it?
So, Sarah, that's a great question, and one that we are planning for right now. One thing that we do have, and I can't seem to get out of this presentation, we have the guidelines from DESI. So, the guidelines from DESI came out July 24th. It's a 17-page document, and I'm not at all going to open that up and have us all look at it. But the one section of it that we do have that gives us some kind of guidance, I'm just going to lower you guys here. Computer won't let me lower you. Let me see if I can shift you. Well, so I'll just tell you, oh, there it is, okay. Still not letting me do it. So, what the guidance is telling us is that we have 900 structured hours of learning time, which is exactly in line with a regular school day. It's also telling us that attendance has to be taken by faculty every day, and that parents are responsible for ensuring that their students are attending school, whether it be remote or in-person. And then, the other piece of the guidance, which is only five sentences long at this point, discusses the synchronous versus asynchronous learning. And it is, the guidance is recommending that students receive daily synchronous learning from their teachers, which means that students will be receiving their learning in consistency with a regular school day, regardless of what model we follow in Massachusetts public schools.
So, let's give an example of what that could look like. What it could look like is, the teacher has a small cohort in front of them. They could have a camera set up, and the children who are in the other cohort at home are watching the teaching live, and they're able to interact through their Chromebooks. That's one example of how that could look.
Just one more thing, just to reiterate Paula's point from before. Guidance is coming out every day, and as it comes out, we immediately hop on it and institute our plan. So, Commissioner O'Reilly did indicate that the remote learning guidance will be issued very soon, and we hope that it's issued, if not this week, then next.
The other thing I want to mention, I know there's some families who are very concerned about sending their child back, period, right? They're concerned about, you know, maybe they have a health, an underlying health issue in their home, and that's perfectly understandable. If some of our students choose to go remote, we are currently looking into a learning management system. It's a platform that students would be guided through the state standards to do more of a self-paced, but we would have a teacher monitoring what they are doing online. But really, it's the program. So, I know Mrs. Stofel and I have been looking into programs right now. Once this plan gets approved, if it does, whatever plan gets approved, I still need to let you know that, you know, we have to negotiate with our teachers, and that will happen later this week. And we have to figure out surveys again from families, because we really have to nail down from families what they want to do. Because logistically, for us to plan this, we need to know who's taking a slot up in our classrooms. You know, do we have to pivot based on who's coming back, who's not coming back? Are people riding the bus? And, you know, that might be an issue of, you're choosing the bus for the year. However, if your situation changes, Mrs. Flynn, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but if your situation changes, you can certainly contact us, and we will work with you. But this is a lot of work and effort that's going in to make this work. The easiest thing for us to do as a district would be to go remote and not do any of this, right? But we believe that this is the best model for our students, so it's definitely worth putting in the time to make this work.
So, a couple more questions. So, whatever is decided today with the vote, let's say hypothetically, it goes to a hybrid model. Will parents get to choose to be, to do the homeschooling, remote learning, and use the same kind of platform, or you're saying that they'll be doing a different platform? So, let me just clarify that, just so I can get it right with my own, you know, thinking here. So, if myself as a parent decides to go remote, I don't want to send my child, my child won't be with their teacher, like in Cohort B or Cohort A, will be doing a different learning platform. Is that correct?
Yes, I want to clarify one thing, just so people are not confused. You use the word homeschooling, and that is a totally separate program, that families can choose to homeschool their child. And they're really, for all intents and purposes, they're really not part of the district. But children who are going to learn remotely because of COVID-19 will be part of the district, right? So, we consider them our students. We will monitor them. But for those students, depending on the number of students who want to go fully remote and not send children back, even though we're recommending that that is the best model for children to learn under, we have to see how many students that is, and to see if we can financially afford to do that. I mean, this could be $1,000 per student for a license, right? So, I'm just being transparent about it. We're looking into all of the options. But as a parent, parents certainly have options and choices in this situation. And like I said, I'm sensitive to all the different, you know, the way people are conflicted over this. I understand why. But we want to work with families to get this right, and to do right by our students in the district, because we care so much. This is a beautiful community. The last thing we want to have happen is for something like this to tear this community apart. We, now more than ever, and I said it already once, it truly takes a village, now more than ever, and I really mean that, we all have to come together to do the best of what we all think by the kids. And no matter what the vote goes, I will respect your opinions, because everybody feels, has a different lens on this. I just explained tonight where our lens came from, you know?
So, again, just to reiterate for the parents and everybody watching out there, the hybrid is, if it is voted in, will be the model of choice. And if a parent decides that they don't want their child to go to school in person, then there possibly might be a remote option, depending on price.
And I just would like to clarify for parents out there what that remote option would look like. One of them that we're looking at are individual modules. So, your child would be in a self-paced, online lesson, that they would watch a video, they would participate in a lesson, and it would be self-paced and overseen by a certified teacher in the district, but it would not be a part of the regular classroom. Does that help?
Yes, it does. It clarifies a lot, especially with all the questions that were coming in.
Absolutely. And the thing I want to say right now, there's going to be a lot of questions, and I understand that. So, we didn't want to get into the weeds of this plan, because we don't even know if this plan is going to be passed. Once it passes, if it passes, now we start really digging in and getting into the details of the plan. Parents want to know, what cohort is my child in? Are they taking the bus? Can siblings go together? Yes, absolutely. But in order for us to start really planning all of these details, we need the plan approved. And I want to say, you know, very soon, we'd like to host a parent sort of panel, where we would have all of our administrators on the panel, and we would ask our families to send us questions, so that we can do a small presentation and embed those questions into the presentation, and then also take some questions live during the webinar or the panel, whatever you want to call it. So, we've created an email tonight, and I'm going to give it to you. This is for parent questions. So, it's questions, plural, Q-U-E-S-T-I-O-N-S, at acushnetschools, plural, dot U S. We will be looking at those questions, putting together some type of presentation that would be helpful for families, and then, hopefully, parents will also have an opportunity to ask those important questions if we have all of our administrators on a panel. We want this to be helpful. We want to be transparent in our communication. So, this is just one way. But I do know, once we start working with the company, parents and families are going to have to commit one way or another, because our district would be paying for licenses if they choose not to come back to school. But what I will say is, the data that, on the family surveys, we had over 75% of families who said, if we had a hybrid model, they would return. And then, there was another high percentage that said, it was unknown. They weren't sure at the time. So, I do anticipate some families may not feel comfortable coming back, but I also anticipate that there are families out there who want their children in front of teachers as much as possible. And, you know, once this plan begins, we have to be able to pivot quickly if we have to, based on the data. So, if I feel that any situation is unsafe, the metrics, we go to remote. And then, you know, we're going to put all these plans on the website and say, okay, everybody, we're going from hybrid to remote, and here's why. Maybe people have to quarantine. I'm not sure what exactly it would be, but we have to be flexible and be able to adapt. But the goal is to continue with the hybrid, and then obviously, add to that if we can get more and more kids back, based on the metrics. But I don't think this pandemic is going away anytime soon. And even when a vaccine comes around, we don't know how quickly it will work or won't work. So, we need to prepare for this. We need to prepare our teachers and our students. This is their year in first grade. This is their year in fourth grade. This is why we have such a strong focus right now on our curriculum. Because even before the pandemic started, we started doing the curriculum audits. We started looking, and we know that our curriculum was not aligned. We have not stopped that work, even during a pandemic. So, we're so fortunate to have new curriculum director, Mrs. Stofel, with us, because this is a lot, it's a heavy lift for everybody. But we're inspired to do it, because we love our kids, and we know that's the best thing for the kids.
I have a question. Sarah, I don't know if you were done, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So, how are we going to measure success in this model? And by that, I mean, how are we going to ensure that the kids are not falling behind? And if we see that there are challenges, are we prepared to make changes? And if so, what changes are we going to make?
That's a great question. Do you want to take it, Mrs. Stofel?
Well, I'd love to start it, and then, Dr. Bailey, maybe you can follow up. I love that question. I'm not sure who that was, because I'm still learning, everybody. Mr.?
Mr. Hood.
Mr. Hood. Mr. Hood, thank you for asking that question, because it is something that Dr. Bailey, myself, the principals, and the teachers are all invested in. And I hate going back to the DESI guidance, but it's where we start. It's where we start for our district, and the DESI guidance for the fall reopening, regardless of the model that we follow, indicates that every school will implement their grading system as if it was a regular school year. So, we will understand how we're doing based on that. Students will have grades consistently with every regular school year. They will receive report cards. But I also feel that we will have additional measures to ensure their social-emotional learning is also helping us with their achievement. We will ensure that there are surveys going out to parents, asking for feedback on how everything is going. From our last school committee meeting, there were so many relevant, awesome questions tossed at us that we are talking about, and we're pivoting on, and we're discussing. So, to Dr. Bailey's point earlier, it's going to take all of us to be on the same page to ensure that our students are as successful, if not more, than they ever have been. I love that question.
And just to add to that, keep in mind, and I say this to all the viewers out there, this is new for all of us, for administrators, for teachers. And that's why that Wednesday remote day is essential for us, so that we can have consistent professional development for our staff, so that they can have office hours once a week for children who are at risk of not doing so well with their grades, and so that they can plan these remote lessons. Maybe they're going to pre-record something for the students to watch. But what I will say, this is far from perfect, but we're in the same boat as everybody else is across the state. But I'm confident that in a cushionet, because of the team that we have, we're going to do it well, as best we can. And I really want families to understand that people are trying their level best. And that feedback over the spring helped us immensely. You'll notice that when we first started remote learning, I mean, it was a little chaotic. But as we got better, we had smaller groups on the Zooms. But it's going to look totally different, because we know, there was no training on that. Teachers know that. I know that. The state knows that. And for our kids' sake, it has to look different, because this is their chance at whatever grade level they're in. We've got to do it right, and I think we all are in agreement that we all care about their achievement. So, whether they're at home learning, or whether they're in front of us learning, So whether they're at home learning or whether they're in front of us learning, that has to be the same. It's got to be quality, high-quality instruction, uninterrupted learning.
If any more questions, Mr. Hood?
I'm good right now.
Mr. Sumner or Mr. Tevz, any comments, questions you'd like to share? Mr. Sumner?
I was looking to see if there was a timeline to get back to in-school learning. I know you presented the hybrid option and the remote option, but there's nothing as far as what, what is it going to take to get us into the classroom? Once we start the hybrid model, are we looking at maybe a month, two months? What is the timeline to when we can get them back in?
You mean full in-person?
Yes.
So quite honestly, I don't see that happening in a month or two months based on the data and the pandemic that's going on. The only way, and this is, this is what we all want, the only way we can have all of our children back with us is if the guidelines were lifted. That means we didn't have to wear masks anymore. And we know what's happening in Georgia right now. The kids aren't wearing masks, and people are getting sick. So we have to make sure that we have safety guidelines in place. The social distancing, the hand washing, the mask-wearing. That's going to become part of the culture of our school. Depending on where the data goes, is we work together to figure this out. If we see that it's not getting better, and we find that our hybrid model is going well, maybe we start looking at, hey, how can we increase to get second grade and third grade here four days a week, let's just say, to increase it? How do we pivot? Because we know the best model is to have children in front of our teachers. That's the best model there is.
Now, is this recommended?
I don't have an answer because it's going to depend on the coronavirus. And without a vaccine, I think it's, we can't, it's very uncertain. And I think that's what makes it so frustrating for people. Whether you're a parent, a teacher, whoever you are, it's frustrating because there's so many unknowns right now with this virus.
Am I reading that correctly, that there's 100% infectionary in Puerto Rico and Washington? On the chart?
You know what? We're so focused on Massachusetts and specifically Acushnet that I'm not paying attention to Puerto Rico and anywhere else.
Let me share with you while you brought up positivity rates because it's something I follow. So every Wednesday at 4 o'clock, they release the positivity rates in Acushnet. And what I have been finding is that it fluctuates. So July 1st, now again, we're looking for that 5% and lower, right? The week of July 1st, it was 8.59 positivity rate, which is not good. July 8th, down to 1.04. July 29th, 3.61, back up again. And then this past Wednesday, August 5th, 1.89, which is great. So we're keeping an eye on that metric as well. Now, I also know the Board of Health, I don't know if Mr. Creer is still here, but we've worked with the local Board of Health. We've worked with our fire chief. We're getting the data, and right now, the data is showing that we should be trying to get our children back as long as we do it in a safe way. And I can tell you, as a parent, my children go to two separate schools. If their school system, we already know one of them is going remote, at least to start. But if my son's school chooses a hybrid model, I will be sending him back to school as long as the safety protocols are in place. I would be comfortable sending my own children to this district based on what we're putting in place. And I can reassure you, at any time, if I feel that the situation warrants a pivot or a change, it's, we're going to recommend that we change, and we, we go remote because it's not safe. We've got to keep people safe, everybody.
I just had a question on, or a real estate man. I would imagine you're, you're going to have a better idea of what to do once we get kind of that definitive head count, correct?
Correct.
And so?
Couldn't really take the head count until we finalize the plan because families really need to know what they're picking.
And so, and, and so I, I think that's, that's got to be of the highest importance is to try to get that head count as soon as humanly possible. Like what plan do we have in place? Could we use a registrar? Like somebody to reach out to these families? Because sending a survey, you're going to get probably 50, 60% respondents, and then you're going to be chasing everybody. So I would say, you know, like getting that number is probably going to, you know, create a lot of clarity as to, you know, how you're going to proceed.
Correct.
Some of these things, right? And of course, the, the meeting with the teachers, right? So those are probably going to dictate, you know, some things, right?
Correct.
And then, and then I think, you know, I had asked early, but I'll ask here, which is about, you know, based on those numbers, there, there could be possibilities of getting more kids into school. And if you could do that, you would, correct?
I, I missed the last part. If I could do that, what?
So, yeah, so, so based on the numbers, so if, you know, based on the numbers of kids that are actually going to come back, if there's a possibility to, you know, get more kids into the school, like a really low number in one grade, for example, like you would, you would, we would be able to, you know, kind of pivot and, and, and do that, correct?
Correct. We have already talked about repurposing our staff. It's important that, you know, we want our staff to continue receiving a paycheck. And I think staff so far have been great about being flexible because we are in a different situation. And, you know, who knows? This might change the way education goes from now on. I saw some wonderful things going on during the remote in the spring. I, I was amazed at what people were doing. And it would be great if kids are learning this now, and it's something that they actually take on with them in their life, and it actually helps them with a job in the future. But yes, for example, Mr. Tevz, let's just say hypothetically, we don't have a lot of first graders who might want to fill up our seven classrooms. Let's say we fill up six classrooms. So now that leaves us with an extra teacher who is certified perhaps in second grade. So then, I think this is what you're getting at. Then we could possibly open up a second grade and start having more kids in the four days versus the two cohorts. Is that what you're getting at?
That's correct.
Yes. So, and that's, that's what I mean about being pivoting and adapting because there's no playbook for this. This is new for everybody. We're figuring it out. I mean, we're building the plane as we fly it. But we're doing it because we have a good team, and we have a, a good supportive school committee who understands that it takes a village.
Any other questions about the plan for reopening? Okay. Well, I just want to say, Dr. Bailey, that I, I really appreciate the thoughtfulness that has gone into this. It's a, I know the incredible amount of work that you have been doing on this plan along with your team, the amount of hours you have spent. This is not a plan that's been taken lightly. It's a very deliberate plan, and I appreciate that very much as a parent and as a member of the school committee.
And I just want to point out for the people watching, I believe it's a 32-page document that you have in your packet tonight, that if this plan is approved, this is what we're sending to DESI. The presentation tonight kind of outlines our thought process in recommending this plan. But the plan outlines a lot of things. But there's a lot more things that we need to get into once this gets approved, if it does get approved.
And I think the important thing here about this plan is that it is sort of a living plan that is going to be responsive to what we continue to learn and as this pandemic evolves. And I think as long as we continue to be very mindful of the fact that we have to every day be looking at what is happening with this pandemic and adjust if needed so that we're doing the best for the kids, we're doing the best for our teachers and our educators and our families. I, I think that that's.
And in order for this to work, when I say it takes a village, it's not just the teachers. It's parents. When you, don't send your kids to school if they're ill, right? We need to be keeping everyone safe. We have ordered temperature kiosks. I know I haven't gotten into all the details tonight, but every entrance will have a temperature kiosk where you just walk up to it. It, it recognizes your badge. It recognizes the fact if you have a mask on, and it takes your temperature immediately, and it goes to a dashboard to the supervisor or me or whatever. We can see the pattern over time. So if your temperature runs low normally, that's fine. So staff are going to have their temperature taken every day when they walk in, and it goes to a dashboard. We're working out details for our students. This is important to us. This, we want to make sure that we do this right. And, and I know that there's so many other questions that are going to come along with this. So I just want to reiterate, questions, the email address, questions@acushnetschools.us. And we will be hosting a meeting in very short order so we can get your questions answered. Thank you.
All right. So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to request a motion to approve the fall reopening plan as presented with the understanding that this situation is fluid and changes to the plan are likely. May I request a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Who did the second?
Mr. Tevz.
Thank you, Mr. Tevz. I'd just like to reiterate again, as, as Paula did, and as Mr. Sumner and Mr. Tevz had mentioned, you know, this is a fluid situation. And if we can get more children into the classrooms more days, then that would be preferable to me. I'm looking to get as many kids in front of teachers as, as physically possible. So I appreciate everybody looking over those numbers and, and hopefully seeing if maybe we can add a day or, or two eventually as this moves forward.
I agree.
Agreed. All right. So we had a second. Any further discussion? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, we'll move into a roll call vote. This is Benavides.
Mrs. Gomes? Hi. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Was that a, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hood?
Hi.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. All right. We're going to move into the next item on our agenda, which is establishment of building-based substitutes. Dr. Bailey?
Sure. So because we've got COVID-19 situation going on, we also know that, you know, there's a, a good possibility that teachers may become ill or, you know, and substitutes may be hard to find. I know in one neighboring district, they just increased the price, the, the rate of pay for substitutes. We are looking to use some of our COVID money to establish building-based substitutes. And our goal would be if we could find at least two building-based substitutes to work every single day in our buildings, that's what we would like to do. We feel that we have the work to keep them busy. We have a lot of things going on between mask breaks and everything else that our teachers are going to need some assistance on. So I have in your packets the job description. This is a very common job description for a building-based sub. Basically, instead of calling in a sub on the day of, we just have two people in each building that are ready to go. And we can also be flexible with having them go from building to building because we're so fortunate to be on the same campus. We also may want to consider looking at the rate of pay of substitutes, given the situation that we are in, especially where other districts are raising the, the rate of pay based on the conditions that people are being, you know, asked to come in and wear masks and, you know, the whole COVID thing. So for the purpose of this, we would need a vote to establish, because it is a new position, establish building-based substitutes. And I would say, depending on the money, with a goal of trying to get at least two in every building, in each building, I should say.
Okay. May I request a motion, please, to establish the building-based substitutes as presented by Dr. Bailey?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Paula, what is the rate they're currently getting, and what is the increase going to be with the COVID money?
So we're not recommending at this point an increase. I don't have it in front of me. Mrs. Flynn, do you have it in front? Do you know what it is currently? I can get that information to you, Mr. Sumner. But I know last year, we addressed this, and we raised it to be in line with the other districts. Now what I'm seeing is other districts are actually increasing it more because of COVID. So I may come back to the committee next meeting and say, you know, we're going to advertise for building-based subs, but we certainly want substitutes to be ready to work for us should we need it. Because we need our adults, our teachers, in front of our kids. If we don't have that, then the hybrid is off the table, and we go to remote. So we've got to keep people healthy or get building substitutes going. So very, this is a very important position that we want to add.
So Paula, can I interject for a second? So that, you just brought up a great point, and it didn't even dawn on me, that these substitute teachers are going to have to learn how to remote learn and use all the technology. So are you saying that these subs are going to be in with the other all-day, full-time teachers, learning all these PD days? Is that what we're trying to do?
Yes, we're trying to hire them as part of our staff.
Okay.
For sure. And this is a common position actually in other districts. And it just makes so much sense for us to bring on this. I mean, we're also discussing, and again, we might come to next month, but we're discussing the possibility of adding custodians. And before we get off the subject of, of our reopening plan, I do want Mr. Willett to give him the floor for about two to three minutes. I know we have a vote on, a motion on the floor. But the substitute position, given our situation, to have those people in training will be essential if we can find the people.
Was Mr. Willett going to speak now, Dr. Bailey?
Well, I think we should go ahead with the vote first.
Okay.
And then I would have him, I just want him to let folks know what, all the great work that's being done by the custodial and maintenance crew. It's been unbelievable what's been happening on campus all summer and, and the great work they're doing. And the training that has been set up by Mrs. Flynn for, for these folks so that we get it right in terms of the chemicals and the disinfectants that are used, et cetera. I just want people to understand, we take this very, very seriously. So we'll let you finish the vote on this.
Great. We'll proceed with that vote. We had a motion so moved and seconded. And if there is no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. This is Benavides.
Mrs. Gomes? Hi. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Hi.
Mr. Tevz?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if Mr. Willett is out there, I, I know I saw him earlier, his box, but I would love it if he would join us. There he is. Because we did talk about the Wednesday and either the Friday evening or Saturday morning as a deep disinfecting in addition to all of the daily cleaning that gets done. But if you could spend just a couple of minutes, Mr. Willett, talking about, and I, I really want you to make sure you address the ventilation issues that you're working on as well, because I think that people want to know about that as well.
Okay. So what do you want me to do? Touch more or less on the, on the COVID issues, not general maintenance?
Yes.
Okay. Well, right now, we've got a company called Advanced Air in the buildings. We've been working out on the big HVAC units. There's, there's upstairs at AES that we've been really going at the big units because there was issues with all across the board, bearings, belts, couplings, all kinds of good stuff there. So this, this is one unit down for the most part out of probably 10 we're working on. There's new belts. Like I said, the, the other belts, when they stretch, obviously, you're not getting the revolutions and the air movement that, that we'd like. So obviously, we wanted all of those up to date, filters changed. They're sealed motors, so there's not really loop points on most of those. There are a couple of motors that are seized, and there are large ones in the gymnasium. There's, there's one that the shaft is going, that's going to need pretty good repair. But for the most part, all the major HVAC units were serviced this week. All the other ones, we're going to be hitting in the next couple of weeks. We're going to have movers moving items into the storage trailers that you see out in the yard so we can move around and get into classes and attack, if you will, the, the other HVAC units.
One of the things I'd like to do coming up- One of the things I'd like to do coming up for that parent meeting is to show some pictures of what the classrooms look like now. We've taken out all nonessential furniture. Our carpets are out and the children will be sitting six feet apart. We're also looking in, again, I'm getting into the weeds of it, but I just want you to know, we're paying attention to things like lunch. Maybe we have picnic lunches outside while the weather is nice. That might be nice for the children if they brought a towel to sit on. It just might be nice to get some fresh air and have their masks off. We may be looking into some pop-up tents by grade level. We only have 12, 15 kids who can spread out and have some shade. There's lots of things that we're looking into right now. And now that the plan has passed, we can actually move forward with the details. But I have to commend you, Mr. Willett. You and the custodial crew, amazing what you've been able to accomplish this summer, and it just continues daily. And you know what's great is that you're so proactive, you're paying attention to Desi. You come to me and say, hey, what about this? It's so nice and refreshing to work with you and your crew. You're very positive in these situations, in these times. Your guys are all hard workers, and I just want you to know, it doesn't go unnoticed.
Thanks. Can I just briefly touch some base on a couple of other things?
Yes.
Other COVID-related issues, there was some hot water issues. Some teachers were saying their water was never getting warm. And as you know, my expertise, I'm a licensed plumber, so I won't go too deep, but the problem is the check valves, almost every faucet in that area has little check valves. And just with time and the minerals and the water and whatnot, a lot of those are blocked up. So the water's going in and out of the hot and cold, and it's mixing a lot. So I've got probably 60 of those units to do. Altogether, you know, we're doing over 120 units of sensor type materials. So just to let you know, the hot water, obviously, would be another concern with COVID. We're on that. I'm changing over to circulator tomorrow that wasn't giving enough pump with the impeller. And those are the two big things as far as air and water. Very briefly on the other things, just so people know, maintenance is going right across the board. Fire alarms, fire extinguishers, the suppressor system, the generators, we're all done within the last week. The boilers are a part and were inspected by the state. Just so they have an idea of all the other stuff going on. And, you know, the roofing sections have been replaced, just to name a couple of things that's going on.
Does anybody have any, just sort of quick questions?
I do.
Big concerns?
I do. I just wanted to ask about the Wednesday deep cleaning. I understand the staff is going to be there. And so I wonder first, can we do a deep cleaning with the staff there? And is it safe for the people in the building, you know, the things that we're going to be using on that day?
Deep cleaning, by deep cleaning, by my estimation, we're going to get things that would be heavily used while the kids are there. The entry rugs, there's also a rug in the nurses' area at Ford Middle that goes into guys, it's a pretty good rug-sized area that we really should be getting every week. If sick children are going to be going there, there's going to be partitions in the new nurses' quarters for the isolation of COVID kids that we're going to have to do. There's a number of new areas that are going to have to be cleaned well. The bathrooms will be done deeper. Cloth chairs will be done. Hopefully, we'll have time to hit the playgrounds on the off days. We have a power washer that we've already hit twice because people are using them on the weekends. And, you know, it's really nice that the public gets to use a little bit of things, get the kids out of house for a bit. So I like to do that in the weekends. We're getting new playground in the future that hopefully we can get. At the very least, let me show you the toy. This is the electric static gun. I don't know if you can see it. There you go. So we go around like Ghostbusters. This does a disinfectant that takes five minutes and kills all the lovely germs that are, so we'll be going through the building with that. That'll be on a nightly, but also on the deep clean days, we can get in areas we don't normally do. I think they're going to be using the cafeteria now with individual guests. So obviously, the guests are going to have to get a better cleaning. We can go everywhere, as you can imagine, on a metal desk. So there's plenty of work to do, and that'll give us a day to catch up. Also repairs, if I got to get in the classroom, we don't want to be taking things apart while the kids are in there. So it just makes sense to have the heavy clean days to get things caught up.
And I think what we'll, just to add on to that, we will have to coordinate with Mr. Willett and his crew that if we're having PD in an area on a Wednesday, for example, he might be doing a couple of wings that no adults are in. I think that's what you were getting at, Mr. Tev, right? So we're going to have to talk about, you know, what areas get done and then what areas get done when the teachers leave for the day, you know, finishing up to make sure that everything is deeply disinfected between cohorts.
Anything further? Does that answer your question, Mr. Tev?
Yes.
Okay. Great. All right. So thank you for that update, Mr. Willett. That was, you guys have certainly been very busy.
Just one other, very briefly, also on the deep cleaning days, you're probably not thinking about this, but with the distance in the halls, it's going to be a lot of hand touching on the walls, and there's a lot of walls in our buildings, hundreds of feet. So that's other areas that have to be tended to on the heavy clean days. Thanks.
And thank you for caring so much about doing quality work in your area. So thank you again.
Thanks.
All right. So just to keep going on the agenda, at this time, we have the principals with us. We have Mr. Johnson from AES who is going to talk about the AES student handbook and the staff handbook. And then Mrs. Sylvia, who will be coming as the principal from FMS, to talk about her student handbook and staff handbook. And what they typically do in this meeting is they just quickly highlight the changes. And then you've been given copies of the entire thing that was approved last year. But just to explain to the new members that the reason why this is voted on by the school committee, because essentially, these handbooks are like policies, right? They're rules, they're policies, and school committee is in charge of policy. So that's why it requires a vote. So is Mr. Johnson online here?
Yep. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hello, everybody. Thanks for having me. So last summer, we did quite a big update with the student handbook. So this year, I only have a couple of updates, really. The first one being on the main page that we added a section talking about that we have COVID-19 appendix that we'll be using this year to provide some more clarification on different sections of the student handbook that we're going to pull out and explain in more detail. The table of contents and principal's message will be updated as these plans are finalized so that the page numbers align correctly. Under the important contacts section, I updated my contact as well as Mr. Willett's contact on that page. And under the school year reporting schedule, that's not in place now, but we will be updating that to accommodate the three trimesters of the school year approximating. That's basically when the report cards come out to the families. So those were the real updates in the general handbook for a normal school year. But we also worked on an appendix that I mentioned before. And the appendix is really trying to pull out some of the other sections of the handbook that are going to be a little bit more critical this year, such as, you know, how we're doing the arrival and dismissal procedure, what the classroom looks like in terms of the six-foot spacing, some information about the buses. We've also included some information that are protocols that are coming out from the state in terms of hand washing, wearing the masks, how to actually, you know, reminders how to sneeze and cough into your elbows and that type of information as well. So we're going to be updating this document as these plans get finalized so that it'll be ready to go, you know, for the families and is a nice, complete, you know, appendix and a little bit easier for them to go to for pieces directly related to COVID. So those are the two pieces of the student handbook. I'll also mention that that appendix, we're using that for both the elementary school and the middle school. So it'll be one document that's going to be shared between both schools. So that's really the description of the student handbook.
Does anybody have any questions about the AES handbook for Mr. Johnson?
I do. Hi, Johnson. So, of course, it's always my favorite time of year when we go over these handbooks. It's true. But I do just want to, once again, the staff directory is so important to parents, so important, because that's where we go to find email, emails for teachers and phone numbers. And I did notice on the staff directory for AES that there are no emails. Now, I know it's their first and last name in AES, accusinit schools.us, but there are so many parents that don't know that. And they go to this guide or they go online to the website, and it's not there. So I really, truly hope that this year will be the year that we can add email addresses to the staff directory as well as keeping the phone numbers or the extensions that are here and have that on the main page of the elementary school. In addition, private transportation, I know bus routes are there, and I know there's going to be a change in that as well, but putting the private transportation and the bus route and the staff directory with the emails on the main page at AES is super helpful for parents. Every parent goes to that website to try to find out how to contact the school or the teachers. And I would just love it to be this year, special year, that all these things on that that means.
So Mrs. Gomes, I can share with you, I've been talking to the principals, at least about the directory. So this is a sample of
Yay!
emails.
Thank you.
You know, we're working, that has to be updated, no doubt. And I do know that they are working on updating that information. And we're going to be updating a lot of information now that we have a plan. All this is going to get on the website. But your feedback is very important because we want to know how to communicate more efficiently with our families. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for that.
Dr. Bailey, are we looking for a preliminary vote here or just a vote, since a lot of these changes are to come? Will a final document come back in front of the school committee for a final vote?
... of the school committee. We know that with COVID-19, this is probably going to be a fluid document for the year because these guidelines keep coming at us. We know that the student handbooks and staff handbooks typically, we try to address this at the beginning of the school year, but if we have to, we can come back again in front of the committee with another, if we have a change, for example, we know that's sort of a policy, right? We put it up, if there's some major change, we put it up for a vote. But I think the idea tonight is the COVID information will continue to be fluid. So I'm not sure that we want to come back to the committee every single time we add something in, whether it's about mask wearing or social distancing, for example, based on guidelines that keep coming down. So I think we're going to have an understanding with our staff that at least with COVID, that's a pretty fluid document, and we're going to have to continuously update that. As long as the committee understands that that appendix will be the same in both buildings, it's the same because it's COVID-related. It doesn't matter if you're elementary school or middle school. And that the other changes he went through, that's really the crux of the vote tonight. If you're comfortable, if you want to hold off, it's fine, too. It doesn't matter really to me. We just wanted to make you aware that we were updating our handbooks.
And the changes that Mrs. Gomes just went over, will those be in, I saw that you had email addresses there, the other items she talked about, can those be included in those updates?
Absolutely. But if you're more comfortable holding off on a vote, we can certainly do that, too. As I remember, I recall last year, Mrs. Gomes, when we did some of the changes that you suggested, I think somebody contacted you to make sure that this is what you were talking about, how does it look, just to kind of collaborate, to make sure we get it right. So we are paying attention and we want to know what's easier. We know we have some things to work on with the website. But I agree about the staff emails, you know, they should be listed.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Totally up to you.
All right. Well, let's see how this passes. So I'd like to request a motion, please, to approve the AES student handbook with the updates described by Mr. Johnson.
Come on.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Who was the second? I'm sorry, who did the second?
I did. This is Ron.
Hi, Ron. Thank you, Ron.
All right. And seeing no further discussion, we'll take a roll call vote. This is Benavides.
Mrs. Gomes? Hi. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tev?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I'd like to request a motion to approve the AES staff handbook with the updates as stated by Mr. Johnson.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, we can move into our roll call vote.
Okay. Mrs. Gomes? Yes. Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tev?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing? Mrs. Downing?
Yes, sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up, we have Mrs. Sylvia joining us to review the same thing at the middle school.
Hi, all. I was kind of excited to think I was in the library this evening with all of you. Nice to face. I'm really
We'll be back soon. We'll be back soon.
I am missing having you in the library on Tuesday nights. So I did give a list of the updates in the student handbook. I did add in the parent portal information on page 19. And then on page 32, the wireless communication and electronic devices must be turned off upon entering school and out of sight. Page 72 is an updated student acceptable use policy that was updated last year. The sections are in A B C order. We updated contacts. We updated, you know, Steve Willett, Carrie Stoffel, not many other additions. I know the updated staff directory with emails, we will put in there. And Sarah, the private transportation is the correct maps, and I do believe we are working to update on the COVID appendix, the student entrance and dismissal, because I do believe it's going to be different this year. We're not all going to come in those two doors. So we need to work on that and update that. So we will be working together on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. On the student, on the appendix A for the COVID protocols that Mr. Johnson, we were sharing the load. The buses, the students will ride the same bus. Bus transfers will not be allowed. Students that are wear a mask and always sit in your assigned seat. The middle school, the extra help and makeup work, extra help will be available to students remotely on Wednesdays. So not only is Wednesday's curriculum, PD and the deep cleaning, the teachers will have office hours in the morning and in the afternoon. And I'm hoping in the morning, they use those office hours to contact parents and students and say, we'll be on at 1:45, please meet me, do this problem, what do you have questions on to get the extra help moving? The guidance for the family vacations, that if you are to travel out of state, you do need to let us know at the school. And we list Kelly Benavides as the contact tracer for the APS. Please stay at home. So we have this checklist, and I have, we have Bonnie Grace, and we have checklist that we'll be sending home to parents with students, and we're hoping to post it on the door. So when the child leaves for the day, they can go through that checklist and check themselves before coming into school. So there's another way to stop the chance of bringing the COVID in. Any questions on the student handbook updates? No?
Questions here?
Nope. Good. Perfect. But the parent, we also had to do some updates in the teacher handbook. I put all the sections in A B C order. The school webpage, the important phone numbers, something new on page 13, faculty and staff concerns. We took that word and it should come directly to, you know, the direct supervisor. Then if not settled, it goes to the superintendent. Page 14, no food or drink in classrooms, including, you know, personal refrigerators. We don't want those in the classrooms anymore. We took out the title textbooks. We don't really have a lot of textbooks that are going home anymore. Page 30, old page 23, teachers will be creating teacher websites and keep the Google Classroom current with assignments. I removed the section titled AR and AM accelerated reader and accelerated math. We do have a new program for that, the success maker. And then the teacher handbook appendix is just almost the same as the student one. Questions on those two?
Nope. So we're looking for a vote on these. So we will start with the student handbook. If I could request a motion, please, please If I could request a motion, please, for, to approve the FMS student handbook.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Okay, seeing no discussion, we'll move into our roll call vote.
Mrs. Gomes?
Aye.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tabs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on to the FMS staff handbook, we could have a motion to approve with the changes stated by Mrs. Sylvia.
So moved.
Second. Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, no discussion, so we will move into our vote. Spenavides?
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tabs?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
I thank all of you, have a good night, thanks.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
So that was important housekeeping items because I know in our upcoming meetings, we're gonna have a lot of, uh, very important things to talk about in terms of reopening plans. Um, but the next thing on the agenda is a proposed return to school plan for preschool. Um, that's the title of the form that I'm gonna be talking about. And basically, we're recommending a tuition change for this school year only, based on the fact that we're recommending preschool with our hybrid model, go two days a week instead of the two and a half days a week. Um, so it'd be cohort A, Monday, Tuesday, cohort B, Thursday, Friday. Um, but because they're missing out on thirty-four half-days, we've adjusted, um, we've adjusted the tuition. So I would, I would be looking for a vote, uh, proposed tuition, um, reducing those thirty-four half-days scheduled at the rate that we have down there. And it would be a tuition of one thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars. And again, that is only for neck, for this school year, the twenty twenty-one school year due to the situation with the pandemic.
Okay. Um, may I request a motion, please, to approve the preschool tuition recommendation, uh, for the twenty twenty-one school year? Is that stated with enough detail, Dr. Bailey? Sorry.
Yeah, I think the one thousand seven hundred seventy-five should probably be in the vote, I think.
Okay, let me rephrase that, please. So I'd like to request a motion, uh, to approve the preschool tuition, uh, recommendation at the rate of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-five dollars for the twenty twenty-one school year.
For preschoolers, yep.
For preschoolers.
Make a motion to approve?
Any discussion?
Paula, what is that gonna do? Cause that is paying for a full para, correct, and a partial teacher? What does that do for us budget-wise? Is it a big deal?
My understanding is we always, sometimes, I think we always have a shortfall with the preschool budget because we don't know until we get into it who pays full price and who doesn't. So we have a preschool revolving fund, and if I'm not saying this correctly, Mrs. Flynn, please, uh, feel free to jump in, but we can utilize our preschool revolving account should we have a shortfall, which we anticipate we will. Um, but I think we'll be okay. I, I'm not overly worried about it.
Okay.
But if Mrs. Flynn, you know, needs to add anything to, you know, what I just said, um, feel free. But I believe that's a, an area that we're always short. We come up with a deficit most years.
Right, until we get the class list and until parents and families return their tuition assistance applications, we don't know what the revenue is going to be.
Right.
We do know that we do try to cover the teacher salary, part of the teacher salary and one para salary. However, this year, um, we will have reduced numbers of full of paying students, um, because the classes are smaller. So, and then depending on how they qualify for the tuition assisting, we, like, we will have a shortfall and, um, we can either just let it go against the balance of the preschool revolving fund, or we can seek to cover it through the local budget, which if you recall from my presentation earlier, we did charge off some of those salaries to the local budget during the school closure. So that, you know, remains to be seen. But as Dr. Bailey said, either one way or the other, either it just decreases the, um, the running balance in the revolving fund, or we seek to cover it through the local, the local budget.
So at this time, Kristen, should the bu, budget subcommittee be concerned about reducing this?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Thanks for that question, Mrs. Gomes. Any other, um, questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into our roll call vote.
Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yes.
Mr. Tab?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Dr. Bailey, are there any other matters on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd like to welcome any reports from school committee members.
I just got a question, Paula. I know we're, we're talking about getting back to school and everything. What is the, what are the protocols as far as if a kid does test positive, they go to the nurse's office? For the families out there, just to put them at ease on how we're handling this, the situations?
Yeah, so we didn't get into that tonight, but our nurse, um, has worked with the local board of health and our director of student services, and they have actually developed an entire medical protocol for when a child exhibits symptoms. They would have to be picked up, for example. But it's several pages. Um, they actually just sent it to me either this morning or late yesterday. It's, I, it's a very recent document that I just received. Um, so that is something that will be coming out and reviewed with families, with the school committee, and it will be part of, again, getting into the real details now of what's gonna happen when we do open and, and if a child does exhibit, uh, symptoms. And again, I think it's, I just wanna say, it's easy for us to become paranoid if somebody sneezes or coughs. You know, people's brain goes right away to, oh my God, COVID, right? We, we can't be sick in a regular way anymore, right? So we would want to make sure that if our nurse determines that somebody is exhibiting symptoms, they're picked up. And again, we have a touchless thermometer kiosk that the nurse will have one at each nurse's station and they will go in front of it and determine right away if that child has a temperature. Um, so you really can't mask it. I mean, we, we have these, we're gonna have them all over the building, really. I think we purchased, I think, eight of them. Um, but there's a whole protocol that we're gonna follow and when we have training with our teachers and, um, our nurse is gonna be involved in that training. It's, you know, I don't know it off the top of my head. I think there's a lot to the document, but you raise a good point and that is something that we will be reviewing as. And just to point out, the reason why we did all these handbooks tonight is I think we are gonna be getting into the weeds of the reopening plan in future meetings. And I think that's gonna be what people really wanna listen to. So this was more housekeeping tonight to get those out of the way. And then, um, we can go over things such as a nursing plan, the medical plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I did have a comment before we, I don't, I don't know if this is a, the section to do this, but I just, um, I think that, um, our communication with the community needs to be, like, outstanding and, and over and above this year. I, I think that, um, in general, this is gonna be a very difficult situation for, for everyone. I know, personally, I know people, parents, that disagree on what to do with their kids and what decisions to make. Like the, these things are gonna, types of decisions are things that can tear a family apart, um, could lead in, you know, uh, ultimately in, in divorces and just thinking about the changes that, you know, people are having in terms of their relationships with their kids. Um, feeling like, you know, uh, they need to be the teacher, the facilitator, um, and not the dad or the mom. I think, I think we need to be really hypersensitive to that. Um, and, and at the very least, you know, what they deserve is a lot of communication, I believe.
Absolutely, thank you.
Can I just add, can I just add to that? So, so I totally agree with that and I think the communications need to be crisp. At the same time, I think we need to be thoughtful about the amount of communication and being redundant, coming from mul, the same communications coming from multiple sources. So I felt at times in the spring a little bit overwhelmed and that there was some repetitiveness. And I get it was something that came up and it was new and we're all trying to figure it out. But I think, um, as part of that, we should be just thinking about the amounts, the frequency and the messages and where they're coming from.
Good point.
And, and just to go along with that, one of the questions on the surveys that we sent home to families was just that. Do you feel the communication is too much, too little? Just right.
It's a tough balance, I, I get it.
Yeah, it's a
It is a tough balance.
It is. But thank you for the feedback.
Okay, any other school committee member comments or updates? All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Uh, before I adjourn, I just wanna make note that our intention tonight was to meet in person as a school committee in our library. Um, but unfortunately, as, uh, you heard earlier, we had some HVAC, um, work being done in that area of the school as well as some cable software installation, so we couldn't do that today. But that is our intention. Um, and our next meeting will be, uh, regular meeting will be in September. We will keep the public well-informed about logistics for that, um, how you can participate in person in those meetings along with us. So more details to follow on that. So with that, I'd like to adjourn. Our next regular school committee meeting will be held, uh, hopefully in person, uh, on September eighth, twenty twenty, at five thirty P M. So with that, I need a motion to adjourn our meeting this evening.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Okay. And do we need a roll call on this, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, let's move into that.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Gomes?
Yes.
Mr. Sumner?
Yes.
Mr. Hood?
Yep.
Mr. Tab?
Yes.
And Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
I'd also like to thank Dr. Fauci for joining us tonight. It's nice that people still have a sense of humor in these times.
With all these roll calls, I think we all know each other's names by now, so that's a good thing. Thanks, everybody. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Good night.